Out of 35 students last year sat for an exam called the Seal of Bilitracy, which certifies them in more than one language. And I just thought it was interesting to see the language that our students earned certificates in, French, Greek, Latin, and Portuguese, which is a little bit, I think, outside what we would expect for our students. Thanks, Jess. In terms of instruction, the things that we focused on last year, one of the things we've talked about year in and year out is studying skillful teaching. We offer that to all second-year teachers traditionally, but because of COVID, we ended up offering it to 16 teachers. The high school will be happy when this professional development ends because there's a chunk of teachers out for these professional development days. But it's really a worthwhile course that focuses on all kinds of strategies in the classroom, as well as what are the current events in education. It's a great way for teachers to collaborate together and get to know each other as well. So it's a really positive experience for our educators, and their last meeting will be in April. We also formed a K-2 literacy committee. For many years, we've been looking at our treasures program or products which support our reading and writing instruction in grades K to 6. And we've known we wanted to go in a different direction, and we got a little sidetracked with COVID. But we were able this year to put together a very large group of teachers, administrators, assistant principals, Dr. Galligan, to take a look at reading practices and to try to make a decision about where do we, as a Pembroke, think our next steps lay. So you may be hearing about this, and I'll get to a little bit more detail in this presentation, but there's a lot of talk out there about the reading wars, and I just want to allay people's fears about that. So the reading wars are a competition, or I don't even know if you'd call it a competition. It's a difference in opinion about how students learn to read. Some people believe that students learn through what they call a balanced literacy approach, which involves a lot of what they call whole language and memorizing words and using visual clues to learn words. And there's another camp, so to speak, that believes in what they call the science of reading, which focuses heavily on phonics, phonemic awareness, orthographic mapping, a number of different instructional strategies that support those. I just want to allay everybody's fears. We are looking at some professional development for our teachers to become better skilled reading teachers, but it's not as if we didn't teach phonics, or we were not teaching the blending of sounds, or that we were not teaching spelling. So this program would be a little bit different in terms of providing professional development for our teachers, but it's not, you know, we've always sort of used a little bit of both of those programs. But this would have more direct explicit instruction in those three primary areas, phonics, phonemic awareness, and orthographic mapping for our younger students. And then for our older students, obviously, the emphasis shifts to comprehension and how does all of that come together? So that's been an exciting committee to be on. We've talked to a number of different vendors and looked at some different materials, so that's been very positive. We've had a relationship with Empowering Writers for a few years this year. They were able to take all of our information together and put together guides by grade level, all in one place. It's really a streamlining process, but it's been very well received by the teachers so that instead of trying to navigate a massive site of all kinds of different supports, they have everything all together. So K-5 has their, has everything from their narrative work to their, every genre that they're using in their classrooms, all in one place, which is really helpful to them. And again, we had OpenSci training for teachers in grades 6 to 8. A lot of that training was virtual, and they were fortunate enough to do a winter training that was in-person, and that went over really well and was far better received by everybody. So I think there's a lot more momentum right now and excitement about the next steps with OpenSciEd. And if you recall, that again is a problem solve, a problem-based kind of curriculum where they're solving things like why does it hail? What is hail? Things that have to do with questions about phenomenon and then solving backwards with what scientific skills do you have or can you bring to the table to solve for this problem? Trying to really get away from the idea that you're taking a test and you see a question and you're like, "I've never learned that," to change the mindset so that students are looking at things and saying, "I'm not sure I know that, but I know a couple of ways I can get at it. How can I solve for that? What do I know that I can apply to that problem?" Which is really the way education is moving right now. As you know, we've been focusing on our interrupted learning process. We've had some professional development for teachers and parent professionals through Rebus Associates about accelerated learning. We've done some high dosage tutoring at all of our buildings. It's a little bit harder in the 7 to 12 realm to come up with some people, but we seem to be, seem to be moving towards filling all of those gaps. And our Math Academy that ran in February was, as you know, a highlight of my year, and we're hoping to have another one in April. We also focused this year on our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. And in grade 5, we looked at integrating Teaching for Justice standards into the curriculum that the students have. All of this stuff is very much in a pilot format. We did not have a lot of teachers that wanted to do summer work last year. So this was one grade that took a look at a new textbook and evaluated the textbook and thought about where the textbook might not have equal representation and thought about ways that they could integrate new materials into the curriculum. So it's a very streamlined process that we use, and actually, it's a process that we've used for many years. There's always been a tool for evaluating textbooks. In fact, it is part of our civil rights audit every year that, that we must do that, actually. So it was, it was a great exercise for grade 5, and they, they spent a lot of time and really took the work seriously. And this year, we've also been participating in what's called a Culturally Responsive Leadership Practice Academy, which is really professional development for administrators about how we can make our schools culturally responsive to all of our community members. Some pics from the Math Academy. It'll be a little bit different this time around without the masks. We invited 227 students. 75 said they were coming, 58 showed up, but they were mighty. They were mighty. We had a great time. As I told you before, there were, you know, thematic approaches in the younger grades and in the upper grades, a lot of project-based learning and sort of competitive kinds of things that they were doing to keep kids engaged for that five hours a day. So far, we've invited 329 students for our April Academy, and those responses are going to be rolling in this week. K-6 conferences are tomorrow, so I think that a lot of parents and families want to have a conversation with their teacher. They've received the invitation, they know why they received the invitation, but I still think that they're looking for some guidance from, from the teachers. So next year, what is it that we want to do? Well, we want to do everything. So one of our goals is to implement the science of reading pedagogy, and that's really about professional development for our teaching staff. We want to make sure that those pathways that we have developed are off to a strong start and that students are able to access the courses that they need and also to get into the community to start doing some work with local businesses. We want to keep forging ahead with OpenSciEd, which would be year two, and I think an even stronger year for that particular group of teachers now that they're able to get together and actually figure out some of the units with other teachers instead of kind of doing it in that virtual environment. One of our biggest goals is to develop the biomedical and manufacturing pathways. That's something that we're very excited about doing, but it is, it is, does require quite a bit of not only resources but professional development for, for our staff. We are thinking and want to explore an expansion of world languages, maybe into grade 6. We want to work more closely with the elementary principals to see if that's the right place, if we could go even younger with that expansion, we're not sure. Sevies has compiled, you know, a list of area schools and what they're doing, and there are quite a few schools that are offering something regarding world language in grade 6. It's not always a typical traditional class, but more of an orbit kind of experience where students are exposed to a couple of different languages, so. And then there are obviously schools that start languages at a much younger age all the way through. We want to expand our DEI focus. We've been talking in our Leadership Academy about our focus being on celebrating community. We really feel that a lot of the work around diversity, equity, and inclusion should focus first on community and what brings us together, what makes us a community, what are the things that unify us, as well as the things that make us unique and different. So that is kind of our, our goal for next year. We'll be thinking about how to roll that out by school, which will be a much more inclusive process and engage a lot more people than, we've been working for the past couple of years with the social justice group, and that's been an amazing experience. But this pushes some of the work out and allows more people to participate, so we're excited about that. We believe that interrupted learning is going to be with us for a couple more years, so I think that the tutoring model that we have started this year, we'll be able to harness that and really start out of the gate much, much stronger next year now that we have identified. We have quite a few retired teachers working with us right now, which is kind of exciting, and it's great for them and for our staff because there's a huge comfort level there, and it's been, and they know our systems and they know our materials, so that has been really powerful. I believe that we will need some academies in summer school for the next couple of years as well. Just, we're going to have different kinds of data after this MCAS season ends, and we'll be able to draw some better conclusions about where the gaps show up in standardized tests. We can see some gaps, and teachers can identify gaps right now off the top of their head, but that will give us some more data for where to focus our work. The Senate passed a law to implement units related to genocide and human rights. They passed that law in October of 2021, and that needs to be implemented in the upcoming school year. That's actually not such a heavy lift for Pembroke. We obviously, we have an elective course called Genocide that's taught at the high school, but in addition to that, these issues come up in world history and in U.S. history all the time. But what we would be looking for is to just make sure that in grade 7 and grade 9 that we are, that we're incorporating the goals that the statue entails. And then we have a NIESC visit coming. NIESC, as you know, is the accreditation organization that our high school does a self-reflection and a self-study first, and then they do, they have a visiting team come in and say, "How did you do with that?" So one of the things that we are responsible for in the teaching and learning group is making sure that the curriculum is transparent and articulated and something that they can easily access and readily take a look at and see if we are following the actual curriculum that we subscribe to, and we are, so that's a good thing. This is just a little bit more information about the science of reading, and again, just the emphasis being on that direct instruction in phonics and phonemic awareness. And I don't know about you all, but that's how I was taught to read. So as is everything in education, is one of those crazy pendulum swings, right? So that, this is, I think, how traditionally many people learn to read, by sounds, learning blended sounds, putting those sounds together, practicing. People moved away from that a little bit and got into this whole language thing where, you know, posting, posting words on walls and looking at picture books and trying to make educated guesses became part of the skill set for students. And in most places, like here, we've, we've sort of blended that. But what we want to move towards is this professional development, which would really equip each teacher to be a reading teacher and would allow them to explore sort of the best practices that have been developed in the past few years around the science of reading. And that's just that explicit and direct instruction, particularly in phonics and phonemic awareness. And it also, that professional development also will enable our teachers to identify areas where kids are struggling and what the best practice is to get the kids back on track. So it, in teacher education, reading is usually one or two classes of all of the classes that you take to become a teacher. So reading specialists are very specialized. They take a whole, like, master's level course of study, but our classroom-level teachers do not. So this would be very welcomed by our teachers and also, I think, an amazing tool for them to have in the classroom. And just a little bit of a, you know, a tease, the biomedical and the manufacturing, engineering, these are some of the courses associated with that, with that course of study. We have a couple of strategies for, for achieving that. One is a Skills Capital Grant that the state offers. We're going to be exploring that and hoping to get some, some money there, and obviously, we'll be looking at Project Lead the Way. So there's two grant opportunities for us to, to apply for.
So we also did submit a capital article for the manufacturing.
Yep. Yeah. So looking forward to that. And then the nitty-gritty. So this particular page outlines the curriculum development work that is generally done during the summer. It has everything to do with our new pathways, the new curriculum that we would need to write if these classes that were approved for the Program of Study were to run, as I already mentioned, the NIESC curriculum alignment. And then at the bottom is the traditional summer work that we do at looking at benchmarks and looking at the MCAS in regards to our benchmark exams and making sure that they're aligned so that we're focusing as educators on the right skills and the right content to make sure that our kids are in the best position possible. And that's the work that we do K to 8. We don't tend to do it so much in the summer for the high school because it is one test in grade 10, and it's a little bit of a different focus, high school-wise.
And there is a budget line associated with summer curriculum work already in our budget, so this is.
That's a great question.
So this is maintenance of effort, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Obviously, the numbers here, if every teacher that we were looking for participated is a little bit over what we have in the budget, but just historically, if we're looking for 67 teachers, we don't have that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was going to wait till the end test.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you go through the line items, if you could just, because that was going to be one of my questions, was is the $1,500 the top for Pathways Curriculum Development?
Yep.
Is that in the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can you just, which ones are in and which ones are out? And I know you added those to the sheet.
Right, they're all in. It's just, so let's say if you go to a Common Unit Benchmark, K through 6, so 67 staff, that's what that total is. 67 staff are not going to participate in that. So there is money within the budget to do all of this work at the level that teachers have traditionally responded to the request to do the work in the past.
So, so this sheet that's on the screen now, this is all covered?
It's all maintenance of effort.
Okay, got it.
Yep. It, actually, Mike, if you were to go back, it looks a lot like every year when we come.
Yeah.
It's the same kind of thing, the new courses, the benchmark review.
Yep, it's just how you're allocating the dollars that are already there. That's right.
Yep.
I knew we, we always had that line item.
Yep.
Years it's been higher, it's been lower based upon framework changes. I just wanted to understand. Got it, okay.
Sometimes it spans two fiscal years, so in years where we get on a little bit earlier, we're able to do some curriculum work that last few weeks in June. This year, we're already late into June.
Does everybody understand that part before we move on to a second page?
This isn't necessarily an ask for anything additional. This is what we budget every year for this kind of work.
And it is in the maintenance.
It's already in the maintenance of effort budget.
Just highlighting what takes place.
Just the first page is highlighting what is in the maintenance of effort budget, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure I get forehead nods, okay. Thank you.
In, in terms of supporting excellent instruction, our biggest ask is in that first line. We are really looking for a full-time educator slash face of this Pathways program to manage maybe one or two classes in the business pathway, because I think that's going to be the most subscribed one initially, but also somebody who can develop and support that pathway development. We're going to need somebody who is in contact with any place our kids are going. There's all kinds of paperwork that's associated with that, and we also want students to know who the person is. And we want somebody to be able to guide them specifically in regards to finding them good internships and finding them places where they can use the skills they're learning at school and apply them in the workplace. There's also excellent resources through Mass Hire, South Shore Workforce Board, that they're there and they're willing to work with us. We need a person that can engage with them regularly and take advantage of the opportunities that they have. They'll help us place our students, they will do a lot of support with us, because this is something that certainly is being championed by the state as well. The rest of this, the studying skillful teachers, is something that generally we grant fund that work. Another big piece of our ask here is a two-year literacy instruction in the science of reading that altogether will be about a $50,000 professional development adventure, but it would, we'll be able to do that over the course of two years, and it would be something that we would be encouraging and offering to all of our teachers pre-K, probably pre-K to 6.
Right, also grant-funded with our title today.
Again, there'll be more OpenSciEd training, and we are in the pipeline for additional grant monies from them as well. We don't know yet what we're going to, to receive from them. Traditional instructional support for the AP teachers. In order to teach AP, you have to attend an AP Summer Institute, and these are the three areas where we need to grow our bench a little bit coming up. And the other things have been grant-funded, the Interrupted Learning Tutors, Acceleration Academy. So those are numbers, I'm using those numbers as the numbers that are, you know, are probably the richest of our programs, but we would be able to adapt those numbers based on what, what comes in or what we have left in terms of grant funding. Summer School and Transition Program are things that we traditionally do. We do MCAS support, particularly for grades 9 and 10, for our students that are in danger of being held back for grade 9 or grade 10 in English and math. I'd like to expand that this year to grades 7 and 8. I think that's a group that we may, we may be able to pull into that model as well. And then typical transition work for the guidance counselors to work with our students as they, they leave one school and head into another, who tend to see that grade 6 to 7 and grade 8 to 9.
So I know my senior got exemptions through the whole COVID and the MCAS. Is it back on track now, and every grade is now back to being required again?
It's back, yeah, it's back, yeah. So this year, our 10th graders will take MCAS just as they have for the past 20-something years, and our 9th graders will take biology.
May Beth, with the professional development tied to the literacy instruction?
Yep.
We've talked a lot, and I've heard different asks tied to reading specialists. Do you anticipate that this training may alleviate some of the future need for additional reading specialists? Will there be some sort of an offset tied there?
Maybe down the road, not initially. I think we have a real need for those reading specialists right now in regards to what we're seeing coming out of the pandemic.
Right.
Maybe down the road, that we might see some leveling at that point. But this type of reading instruction is what we want all our teachers to be able to do going forward.
Will it at least alleviate some of the load on the current reading special?
It may. Initially, no, because it is a two-year program in terms of trying to, to complete the, the reading. And also, one of the things we'll be doing in addition to the professional development is identifying materials that teachers need to implement the program.
Gotcha.
So I think it, it will down the road, Susie, will have an impact on maybe how many reading specialists we need, but not right now.
No, okay.
Not right now.
Thank you.
Yep. And advanced placement support, as you know, with our open enrollment, that's also a maintenance of effort piece, but with our open enrollment for advanced placement, students often need a little extra time and a little extra instruction, and our teachers jump on that and tend to get into it between, really between April and May is when they do it.
So the only thing on this page that isn't asked is the first thing. Everything else exists, either through grant funding or maintenance of effort.
The new materials are, again, somewhat traditional. We're looking just for updates in biology, economics, world history, and world language. We anticipate needing some materials to support our new courses in business writing and in digital arts, and some of that digital arts money has to do with the certifications process. It's a little bit more involved with the digital arts. We don't know yet what courses are going to run, but that's a ballpark figure for the five or the four classes there that we have proposed in the Program of Studies. We will need some materials for our new science program. That's nothing too new. Again, we want to come back to support our diversity, equity, and inclusion review as our teachers are working through those humanity units and identifying new texts that they might need or different novels that they want to incorporate, want to make sure that they have some support for that. And then the last two things are really exciting new programs that are being proposed in the humanities. One is called News ELA, and it's a, an online resource that really can replace anthologies. So I know Mike is a, has been at this table long enough, but anthologies come up every probably 10 years or so, and for each level of English, they buy a big thick book, and kids either drag them home or they leave them at school. Well, as everything is being streamlined, News ELA has done that as well. And it's actually a source that we can use in grades 7 through 12. It has primary sources. It can work in history as well as it can work in English. It has all kinds of genres of, of reading, and you can also level the reading. So if you're teaching a class of differentiated students or students at different levels, you can change some of the reading, the reading difficulty for those kids. So that's a, a positive thing as well. And then the last one is called No Red Ink, and this is exciting for those, for English teachers, too. It's an online diagnostic and progress monitoring tool. So if you think of it, you think of it as like Lexia or Core 5 for, for older students. So it allows teachers to get a baseline of where, where students are with a number of different skills, grammar, writing, reading comprehension, and then it gives, it helps you to build a program for that student to continue to grow. So it's, it's really exciting, and, you know, a lot of the things in the humanities are very subjective, so this is a tool that I think teachers will really be able to utilize to help students to develop. There's an SAT portion of it. I think there's an ACT portion of it, so you can actually be doing practice tests in those arenas as well. So it's a, it's a pretty powerful online learning tool, I think. And I, again, I think the teachers will, will really love being able to quantify some of the work that they do. The humanities is always a little bit different. There's not a lot of tools like that for, for the upper grades. There are the younger grades, but not as, as students develop, so it's kind of exciting.
And all of this are the existing maintenance of effort. There's a line item for $150,000 for district-wide curriculum, so no new asks there, just telling you how we'd be spending the money.
And the last page explains all of that. So if you can see in the summary, that the curriculum development alignment and review, that $40,000 would come out of the superintendent's summer work line. The new materials, text, online programs would come out of district-wide curriculum. And then most of the instructional piece could come from grant funding. So we're in a, a pretty strong position, I think, for, for meeting those goals. Our biggest ask, again, is for one full-time educator to work in the Pathways program, both as an instructor and as a coordinator of that program. And that, is it, my friends? Okay, Mike, I'm ready.
I was going to go next.
Is this, is this part of?
Yep, so that's the Teaching for Social Justice standards. I just had her give you a copy of what was referenced in the outline.
Okay, so now where does this information come from?
So that comes from what's called Teaching for Justice, which used to be an organization called Teaching for Tolerance. It is a site that supports diversity, equity, and inclusion, and has a lot of units of, has units of instruction, it has background information, it's a, got a wide variety of ideas.
Is that the only option?
Well, that's the one that the teachers selected. So we went through a process in the spring with the grade 5 teachers, and we looked at, there's, this is a small slice of, I think there are maybe like 32 of these, and what we tried to do was look at the things that we thought aligned most closely to the work that we wanted to do in Pembroke. So what, what is it that we want our kids in Pembroke to come out of a K to 12 experience in terms of thinking about justice or in terms of thinking about diversity, equity, and inclusion? And they're, they're a little bit intertwined, and that is, these were the ones that they felt we, in many cases, are already doing and also want to make sure that we pay particular attention to moving forward.
So you're in particular looking at the 3 to 5 outcomes, because we're talking about a grade 5 textbook.
Well, this was in a three, yes, but this, yes, for, for last year's work, that was where they focused under 3 to 5. So I know about my family, history, and culture. I know what contributions that they made. I have accurate, respectful words to describe how I'm similar and different from people. I feel connected to other people.
So I, I guess, just curious about, you know, I was reading this at home, the students who develop language and historical and cultural knowledge that affirm and accurately describe their membership in multiple identity groups. And this sort of, actually, just, I read through all of them. It's sort of more aligns with critical race theory thought, ideology.
In what way?
Well, sorting kids by identity is really, you know, it just, I don't think it aligns with what Pembroke was trying to do. For example, you know, just on the town-wide side, the town voted. For example, you know, just on the town-wide side, the town voted, you know, not to have the DEI committee because, you know, for a lot of these reasons, because they don't want to move towards a critical race theory form of thought. And, you know, the standards that you put, that you're giving us are like really aligned with.
Can you, when you do that, I, because I'm struggling putting it together with CRT. Can you talk to which of the five tenants of the CRT that applies with? Like, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing with where your argument's going, but tying it to CRT.
I'm talking more along with.
Well, hold on, let me, just let me finish. Tying it to CRT brings up a completely different argument.
Yeah.
And I'm just, because I read this, I read this a little different than you did. I did not see CRT in here because I, I know the five tenants.
Yeah.
Of it, I just didn't see it. I'm just trying to under, because it's helped me understand where it aligns with CRT, because I have, I have a different, I have a different concern than that.
Sure.
And I just want to know where CRT is in here.
So, so for me, a lot of CRT comes from sort of a Marxist thought, right? It's a, as you know, it's like, it was a law course that was, that's been taught in colleges, obviously. It's not like a, but the ideology from it is along the lines of, you know, the oppressor and the.
Okay, so you're talking the ideology, not the five tenants.
Yes.
Which is, which is different. So you're talking about the ideology that underlines it.
Exactly.
I'm sorry. That's the foundation of it rather than the five tenants.
Right.
Because it's different. Okay.
Exactly.
So, okay.
So, so my concern with it is that it really is sort of going against what the town really wants, from what I've noticed of what the town wants. I know that the select board did vote in DEI committee anyways, but it was against the town vote. And, you know, my concern in realigning our standards as a school system to these ideas could really hurt our town. Like, we, we, I feel like, and, and don't get me wrong, like, I know that everybody who, you know, goes through this thought process and wants to have, you know, the social justice, the new social justice norms or whatever, the, you know, it's all done in good intention. And I believe that the intention is, you know, to not discriminate and to have a welcoming community, and I really genuinely get all of that. My concern is, is that we should have something that more aligns with what all of us wants, more middle-of-the-road, that could be welcoming to the community, discourage discrimination of any kind. I mean, obviously, equity in the classroom is.
So Sue, when I read that, I read it as, I know my family history and cultural background, and I can describe, for example, we have newcomers that have arrived in our schools from Egypt.
Yeah.
Whose families are probably in the process of becoming American, right? So you can describe your family's history and how they came here, and how you are shaped as both Egyptian perhaps, and, so I'm not, like, I don't see that as a critical race theory issue at all.
So what it's doing is sort of like, you're pointing out everybody's identity, so to speak. And it's, for me, I believe it is causing people to discriminate rather than doing what the intended effect is, is to get people away, like, we're, we're doing bias training for these kids, like, this is, like, teaching kids about biases, and, you know, all of that is really around the ideology of critical race theory, and I'm concerned that we're on a slippery slope.
Yeah, I guess I don't see it that way. So when I started teaching in like 1993, we were talking about bias and stereotypes. So I think those are important developmental reasoning skills that you learn about yourself and about culture for you to navigate the world. I feel like we're doing our students a disservice if we're not informing them about these things that they are going to navigate as they leave, as they leave Pembroke or as they progress through Pembroke. So I just see it a little differently.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I feel like that's more of a college thought, in that we're actually taking away from parents, their ability to teach about cultural things in their own home, and how to, you know, I, I feel like you're taking it away from the parents of the town.
What would you be taking away?
The ability to teach about the cultural differences in a way that aligns with each family's, you know, each family's ideology, you know? So some people in this town are very faith-based, some people are, you know, there's lots of LGBTQ, you know, groups, you know, like, there's couples, and, you know, so I wouldn't want, you know, like, I'm sure a faith-based family may not want to teach, you know, or an LGBTQ, you know, would not want the faith-based community teaching their children. They would want to teach their children their way. You know, like, in, by putting it all in this construct, I feel like you're taking it away from families to make those decisions.
Right, and I, I would say that, just that block that you're focused on in particular, I would argue the opposite. This is my opportunity to share my family ideology with my peers, so people understand my cultural history and understands kind of what my thought process and beliefs are. It clearly says, you know, I know my family history and cultural background. The majority of the manner in which you learn that is from our family, right?
But I hear it's asking people to be able to point it out in other people, their biases, which I feel like just doesn't.
So they're asking that in grades nine to 12, right? They're basically saying at that, as you develop, are you able, are you able to have those conversations? And I have to always counter this by saying this is being done respectfully in classrooms where we're, we're teaching kids how to think for themselves. And they're going to disagree, just as you said.
Yeah.
Our classrooms are very diverse. They may not be racially diverse, but they are very diverse. And it's imperative that we're able to teach kids to represent their thinking in a way that's respectful, that's not harmful to others.
I agree with you 100% on that, and I think that there's got to be another way to do that, that doesn't align with critical race theory ideology. I just, you know, I agree with you that that's needed in a certain way. I just don't agree.
I just don't see this as critical race theory.
I, you know, I know, but I, I do.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like there will be a lot of people that would disagree with you on that.
Well, and Sue, I, I read this too, and that was the first thing, okay, as I'm reading, I'm reading it through that lens of, is it going to be anything construed to be critical race theory? And I didn't come to that conclusion. To that same point of what I've been hearing tonight is, it's creating a culture or a community, right? That's been the focus.
Yeah.
And it's more, more about, does the individual understand who they are and, and feel comfortable in that environment where they can be themselves, right? It's more individual versus group. I'm not teaching you about me, I'm learning about myself. And that's sort of how I read that.
Yeah.
Again, if I'm misconstrued, but it seems to be also others' thought process, and that's sort of how I read it. Because I'm with you, that's, that's an area I don't want to go to.
Right.
And I didn't feel like this did that. This sort of kept it at a higher level where we're not, need to get that point, but I, I appreciate your thought on that.
Yeah, I appreciate your thought. I, I don't agree, but I appreciate your point.
Yeah, no.
I think when I read this, because I tried, I, I'll tell you, I read it multiple times, trying to look at it from the critical race theory perspective, because this is a hot topic. And, and there, you know, anybody who's been to any meetings in town knows that there are very strong opinions on both sides of this. So I, then I came back, my second read was, is this going to help create community, which is our intent, or will it cause us to assess and divide us into categories which might make it less more community? So where I ended up walking away from with this is, I wasn't sure it was really critical race theory, but I felt like as we look and we're encouraging to identify the various groups we may fit in, we, we are on a slippery slope of potentially identifying categories which might divide us up. And, and I really want to focus of how similar we are, because at the end of the day, we're all, we're, we're, we are a community. So it, it may be, I guess, I, I may have to tweak the wording is kind of where I landed with some of this, because there were questions like, well, who ultimately is defining the word bias? What, what is the litmus test to determine bias? So that, those pieces of it that, where, that's where the, the, the nitty-gritty comes in. So that, those were my questions tied to this.
And I agree with you. Those are very nuanced arguments.
Yeah.
And those are, are very sophisticated reasoning skills. And this isn't necessarily the language we put in front of the students, right?
Right.
This is sort of the language that teachers use to guide them in their thinking in terms of making sure kids know their own history and making sure kids are proud of their history.
Right, and not to tell them about that history.
No.
Really, I, I ultimately landed saying, I believe the intent of this is to help encourage those conversations at home.
Yeah.
That you're talking about, but keeping it, the respectful dialogue to prompt the ideas about any number of angles on this conversation, so they can go home in their safest environment and have those dialogues at home with the people that love them and support them. So that's where I think we want to get to. I think we might have to tweak the wording, and that's why it's a draft.
Right.
And, and I think this was good for us to kind of go through it and really.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have a difficult but very honest dialogue of the pros and cons of maybe how it stands right now in this draft format.
Sure.
So a couple things. First of all, in, when I read this, and I read this probably three times today, since we got it, and I probably spent, probably read the five pillars of critical race theory 105 times in the past 18 months, to make sure I understood that, you know, don't agree with it, but I understood it, especially where it has some things that are pretty far out there that I don't think you would get if you, if you wrote it down as a single statement and put it in front of people somewhat anonymously, and what they were reading, they, they wouldn't agree with most of the five pillars. You know, that said, I think what, one of the things we're talking about is one of the things that we're talking about here, right? If you think of, we've had six people talk about this very issue, and we've had six different opinions or six different interpretations. You know, and I'm including myself in that, because we're all a little bit different in how we read it. That said, there are two things, when I read this, I was concerned with, I was going to wait, but I'll ask it now because it's topical. One is, I do have a concern of where the line between parenting and education is. I've had that concern not just on this, had that concern, Mary Beth, we were talking earlier about the books, right, even part of Ed's sub, when we've looked at books and things like that for schools, hasn't been, it's been a while, but I have. But when we've looked at those, you know, had those discussions, whether it's that or whatever it is, of where do we stop as, as a school district and where do we, where do parents start? And that line, by the way, has shifted over the years. In 21 years, that line definitely has moved because that's the expectation of schools. So that's my first thing. Second thing, actually, three, three things. Second thing is, when I was walking in on the court, I don't know if anybody saw it, there was a kindergarten project of what it's like, what you have to be to be part, what you need to do to be part of a community. And it, it made me think of, of some of the things I have here, which makes sense. Standards and norms we have to teach. But here's where, and this is where I'm going to pile a little bit on what Suzy said. And Suzy talked about certain definitions. When I look at definition of unfairness and injustice, we can all, everybody will sit here and agree about certain injustices, but then there are some where we're saying, is it an injustice or is it just life? And I don't, and, you know.
And it's very subjective.
It is, and that's.
That's the tough part.
So when I say that, that kind of even, that goes a little bit to my, my parenting comment, and, you know, I might as well tie, tie it together, because I did have two other questions on this topic. One, on an earlier slide, you mentioned about standards, and I guess that's this. How much of the standards have changed besides your gen, the genocide statute that changed? What of the curriculum frameworks has changed to?
So there's been a civics, so there's, as you know, a few years ago, they implemented a statute that has to do with the teaching of civics.
Yes.
And it requires that students do a project in grades eight, or at a middle school level and at the high school level. They can do that as a group, or they can do that individually, but that is another huge shift in terms of asking students to become active in their communities, to become civically active.
Okay, so that's really where that, that's the only other big framework change, or have they?
Well, in the humanities, there's been just time shifts.
I mean, you have to go through all of them, I get.
Things like that, yeah, there've been time shifts in world history and US history, things like that, but nothing substantive, substantial.
Okay. Because my other question or comment on this particular topic, and then I'll, I'll stop, is, has to, we always, and it's, it's happened everywhere, and it's even happened here, the reading lists. And what, the books that I think each one of us read in high school, right, that were required reading, some of those are no longer included in, right, because our, as a society, certain perceptions have changed. What's to say, or how's the decision when you talk about the books that are going to be integrated? What's the process to make sure that, whether it was what Suzy said or Sue said, make it more of a mainstream piece? Because when I, when I heard you talk earlier about community, there's multiple communities that we all involve, or are in, we're all a part of. One is a community at Pembroke, right, which I think is, is one community, and one community in some cases different than others, because every community is different. And then there's the, right, other communities, the school community, there's the, the society of, right, where we live in, that's whatever it happens to be. So where do, where do all these things kind of intersect? And how do we get to the materials that represent what the fabric of this could be? Does that make any sense?
Sure. So what generally happens when teachers, teachers work in their curriculum groups throughout the year and in the summer, and maybe there's a book that somebody comes across or has read that they think would be a wonderful book to incorporate into their, to their classroom. So for example, when I was teaching world history, there was a book about the Vietnam War called The Things That They Carried, Things They Carried. It could have been a US book, it could be a world book, whatever, but it was a collection of short stories. So in order to integrate that into my curriculum, what I would have to do is then ask, you know, the department head would have to approve it, the department head would then have a conversation with, if there's a curriculum council or a larger teaching and learning group, which we have, you talk about that, and then you think about, you know, you vet the book, you look at, you know, what's the recommended grade level, what's the lexile level, what's the content, is it developmentally appropriate? You know, in some communities, there's been some concern about books that include information that they believe is too, too young, that kids are too young to be, to be managing some of those themes. What we tend to do in Pembroke, and we've had some of those conversations as well, when there is a book that we feel has some information in it that may be something that families want to know about, we always send a letter home and explain what the book is and where, you know, why, why it might be something that as a family you want to discuss before your student reads it, and you can, we can select another book, you can choose another book. So we do that also, you know, I remember for a while, we were showing Schindler's List at the high school, and there were a number of families that felt that that was just too, too graphic for their students, so they, you know, they opted out of that. So what we've tried to do is always give options. So if there is a book or a movie or something that, you know, we are doing that does not fit with a particular family's goal, we try to provide an alternative to that.
No, actually, I'm going to wait a couple seconds if I may, because it's funny how I look at this, I'm hearing the difference of opinions, I'm saying, hey, this is simple, but it's kind of some interesting point of view, so I'll defer to that if I may.
You can't ask other questions. You're good on this topic, because I just want to, I want to kind of circle this back to, I want to understand what the next steps are here. And I think, right, there have been concerns raised across the board, but there's, right, this was a draft.
Right, so this is a draft. This is what we're, you know, we, we shared as our first work. The work that goes forward, we're looking, you know, we're looking for some, some input in regards to the work as we move forward with our humanities curriculum.
Okay. So we would never vote on this or approve this, correct? Because of, it's out of our purview, but we've given.
Correct.
It's not a policy or procedure, so, but we've given feedback.
Yes.
Is there some, can we get feedback? We have a feedback loop here, so we get if there are changes made?
Sure, and I think you'd expect changes to be made once we have more teachers engaged in the work over the course of the summer. We had such a small group, you know, over this past summer that took a look at grade five in particular, you know, and adopted the new grade five textbook that Mary Beth spoke about. We're happy to circle back with you over the course of the summer and into the fall about, you know, any shifts that, that we're thinking about as far as this, and I do understand and appreciate all of the feedback that you guys have been given. It is interesting when people come at it from five different ways. Like, we always, almost always come at it from an education lens, and if you don't have that background, you come at it from a different lens, and it's always important for us to, to hear that. But I think we all recognize that everyone's, has the purest of intentions when talking about this. I think, you know, when I think about this and this work, I think about it at the most elementary level possible, in wanting to make sure, you know, every kid can read a book from an author that they can identify with, right? And, and just those fundamental pieces of it, or books where, where I look like the character, and, you know, incorporating those works into our classroom libraries and, and those pieces, I think that's kind of the base of the work we're looking for, but understand that it has K through 12 kind of ripples to it, so.
Yeah, I think everybody would agree, tell me if I'm wrong, when you, you know, part of what Sue read about, and what family history and cultural background can describe how my identity is, is informed, is informed, is informed, and shape, we, we all want people to be able to be able to tell their story.
Of course.
Because that's how we built, become, that's how we belong as part of a community.
Of course.
I think it's some of the other pieces, right? That's where the concerns are, because they're open to interpretation, and families all have different interpretations between the, you know, the eight of us sitting here, where everyone here has children at different ages and stages of their lives, right? We all have different, we've all raised our children differently.
Yep, and we want all children to feel included.
Feel welcome, absolutely.
And, you know, regardless of any of their identities.
But I think it's also important to point out that, you know, all of us here at this table might have our own parenting ideals. There are a lot of students that don't have that strong family, close knit family like some of us may have in our homes, and it's important that we create a place where they can ask questions and have conversations. I understand, you know, the, as Mike said, what, what is a school responsible for versus what is a parent responsible, or has shifted mightily over the past three years. You know, we, we went from no social workers to social workers in every building and, and just the focus of what, what we offer as a school system. And it's important for you all as a committee to know that there are many members of our community in the schools that are comfortable having a conversation with their teachers about their gender identity, that they're not comfortable having a conversation with their parents about.
We heard, we heard that with the kids on the feeds. The kids, you know, it was, it was clear, and I remember the first K through 12 budget from Pembroke had a social worker in it, and I had to be convinced that it was needed.
Look at you now, you've come so far.
Exactly. And I think one thing can just say, and this is, I think, I think the, um, race is important to all of us, but one thing that I, I want to make sure we consider or look at is there's other things here, right?
This isn't just about.
It isn't.
This is about inclusion.
We had, we had our inclusion in some cases, I mean, just talked last week a lot about inclusion and what it means within special education inclusion classrooms, and, you know, my kids are all fortunate to be part of inclusion classrooms, and it did shape them as, I think, as better human beings. I just, and this is, and I've talked to people, obviously, on both sides, and say, you know what, I understand where you're coming from, but also let's not forget about those children, because those children, I hate to say it, but sometimes get forgot in this discussion, because we focus on one aspect. And that aspect is important. I'm not minimizing anything, because I don't want somebody to say, oh, it's not, that's not the case. It's making sure we look at everyone.
Right. And I think the last thing we want is someone who, you know, maybe somebody from the LBG TQ community who's like, you know, doesn't have home support. We want everyone to feel like they have a voice, and it's very important. My only point is, is that, you know, we have to be careful as a town, I think, based on what the town wants, you know, and like, it does not, there isn't just one way to address it, is my point, I guess.
Oh, absolutely not.
You know, and.
We think, so I remember, but one of you can mention it, and it kind of ties to your points, every kid has to have a safe, a safe place.
Right, yeah.
I'm not sure which of you might have both said it, but.
Well, just to be able to know that there's a respectful disagreement, because, you know, and it didn't happen in this district, but I've, I've, I've had, you know, I've, I've got a child that's friends with kids from any number of districts because of out of school activities, and, and it has nothing to do with, you know, gender identities or this, that, or the, sadly, it's a political situation for this particular student who really took it on the chin. And, and so it's, it's, this is so much more, we, we have, we have to support respectful disagreement. And, and, you know, it's tough in a pandemic and people are stretched very thin. Tempers are much higher than I've ever seen in my life. This is, you know, it's, it's, it's just different, difficult to have a different idea. You know, and I have a friend that stress is very hard, it's about ideas, and, and we have to be able to respectfully express our ideas, and, and with an emphasis on respectfully. And so I think that's what I see the overall intent of this, is to have respectful dialogue about ideas.
I agree.
And, and, you know, we, we need to model that type of behavior in the district, not telling them what ideas to have, but then our students may model that behavior in the community, which will help so many that are really, their intentions are really good, but have gotten lost in the anger. So, my hope is as we come out of the pandemic, we come out of the anger fog as well, and we return back to that respectful dialogue about ideas. Right?
Suzie, do you have other questions?
Just what I got from that paper.
About teaching and learning budget presentation.
Yeah.
So, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good, I'm.
Thank you. Suzie.
Nope, I'm good.
No, I, and that was really what I took out of it, sort of what you shared, that creating that community and that environment that this dialogue can take place in a respectful platform, right? And to be able to have that and understand that, to your point, the thermostat has been high, and whether it gets back to normal or not, we can do our part in least creating that culture and environment and community to be able to have that dialogue and have that respectful back and forth. Even if you do disagree, it's okay, but providing that understanding, right, that I may feel some way and you may feel another, but ultimately in the end, we're part of this community and we're going to work together on things.
At the end of the argument, we're still neighbors, and sometimes family members.
Exactly. Right, I may not agree with everyone in my household, but we still get along.
But I still love a, there you go. Absolutely.
I'm good, thanks, Mike.
I do have just one question outside of all of this. When we, the pathways, as we start to go into some of the top subjects that haven't been traditional, what type of certification, or is it covered by certification? Is the?
Yeah, so the biomedical one is an easier one because a chemistry or biology certification will suffice for that. It could get more interesting with the computer manufacturing, so.
That's what I thought, because is it, what type of science is it, or is it, is it computer? Is me, technology? I, I just, I was struck, I was, here's where my concern was, is we won't be able to find an instructor for the program, the programs worthwhile to help the kids, and we're at a conundrum because is it, do we have to, should it's a concern we raise to DSS and the reps?
It's a concern, for sure. You can get waivers for certain, you know, for a certain amount of time, while the best thing for us to do would be to identify a teacher within our district who would be willing to get that additional certification.
So, there are certifications for all of the pathways?
So, for biomedical, there's not a biomedical, you can be a science, you can be any, you can be a chemistry or a biology teacher, probably even physics, I don't know, but you can, you could make that fit. For the manufacturing, engineering, I believe you can do that with a computer science or even with a math certificate, but most of our teachers would need specialized training in order to deliver that curriculum.
Yeah, the PD to, to teach them to deliver the curriculum is one thing, and that to me is, to me, that's an easy thing. I want to make sure that we don't have a licensing issue for a teacher, we can't find a, a trained educator.
Mark seemed to think that we could perhaps harness somebody in the district and encourage them to, to get that certification.
But there's not a license for.
I, I don't believe so.
Which is okay, if you.
Yes, it doesn't mean there won't be.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean there won't be, but it also, if you, if you set up these.
Well, that was part of the problem with the, you know, woodworking and CAD CAM when we had those courses, that was part of the problem, finding somebody with those licenses, so.
They changed the, they changed the requirements at one point, which made some people.
Right, ineligible, yeah.
Yeah, they either had to go get another, relicense or, I don't remember that.
No, we're going to be, we're, we're on, Mark is more attuned to that than I am in terms of what he's thinking in terms of moving forward, but he seems to think we might have somebody internally that we could develop.
What other districts, is there another district that we've looked at that might have done this, that?
Yes. We went to visit Carver and also Hawkeington has done it. I'm pretty sure Waymouth has done it too. A lot of the bigger schools that have, like, have vocational components to them are already doing this.
They're already doing this, so is there someone there that you could reach out to just to see what they've done in terms of?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we've done that, yeah. We've done that, yeah.
Just ask.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mary Beth.
Yep.
Want to talk about, do you want to talk about First Utilities?
No, I prefer transportation.
Utilities is such an electrifying.
Oh, sorry, it's always.
So, Erin, did you bring that up? The bus contract will go to bid this summer?
No, so we do our, if we're a year contract, do one year often, so FY twenty-three, I first one year often, so we would look at.
The following summer, okay.
You need folders.
It's a lot of work.
I'm coming in.
I'm having.
This is Brendan, I pull out a card.
I'm having shakes.
Brendan's like, what is going on?
I feel like a seizure's coming.
Exactly.
Somebody has a stack, you have a screen like that, you're like, what?
Yeah. That would kill me. That's my wife, she hates this. How do you find it there?
I can, I can have a.
Yeah. I know what you just worked on, like, if I'm downloading something, it comes on the desktop, I know I just did it.
I feel unorganized in there at times, I'm like, what have they done to something?
Yeah.
I don't have much on the desktop. I wish I had my presentation, I just don't save it there.
So, this was a part of the first stuff that we just got. Some of this is a little different. I haven't seen this before.
My people love to know, I'm going to send a day with the bus, they're crying their kids.
That's, no, I do. That was me for most of last year.
I gave a call to my kids to take the bus, I drive them every morning.
He would want us to take him in the morning and then he would take it home. Or vice versa.
The search one, could we?
I just be curious.
Should I have search feature?
Well, now I have.
I can't help it because I can't see that far.
COVID year when I wasn't working, I was home, two o'clock, and I was in there. I knew my spot that I could get him, get out.
How about that, Ben? So, if I do these, I mean, do you read? But it's, it's blurry.
Yeah, mine's a little fuzzy.
But what I do is sometimes, because I have two monitors on the big one, I'm like this.
Yeah, I think I'm going back to contacts and cheaters. It's just, it's tough because of allergies, making contacts, like, it's something going on.
Here's my spot.
This is all the range. Literally, I can't see anything. I can't do that, I can't do this. It's just, it's a privilege to go.
I feel.
COVID is pretty consistent.
Are we good now?
A little behind.
There we go.
We have to switch it to utilities at some point, so.
They're still taking.
It's no fun that way.
I know.
Okay. So, in your packets that I sent out over the weekend, I sent you an overwhelming amount of information regarding transportation and utilities. So, I'm going to start with transportation. In your packet, I had given you some ridership numbers as well as some of our annual cost numbers, but I thought it might be a little bit more helpful to tie that information together into a little bit of an overview. So, here you have our five-year transportation ridership. So, this is regular ed transportation, so our students that are riding our yellow buses to and from school. You can see historically what our numbers have looked like, obviously in FY twenty and twenty-one, families were encouraged to seek alternate transportation to schools because we weren't necessarily sure what the spacing guidelines were going to be. You'll remember there was a time where we were one kid, every other seat with open windows in the snow, then it was two kids, every third seat, it's been a little bit of everything, but it is back to normal here. So, our, our ridership has been pretty consistent outside of twenty twenty-one. So, you can see there are elementary numbers and the percentage of elementary families that are requesting a bus pass as well as secondary families. I'll remind you that elementary bus passes are free of charge, so we do get a lot of families that request a pass that don't necessarily ride the bus, but they are assigned to a bus. So, in the off chance that, you know, you, your mom isn't driving you to school or your dad's not picking you up, you can get on the bus. So, these numbers reflect students that have passes to ride our buses, both elementary and secondary students. Now, it doesn't work.
So, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Where, what is, so we have lower percentage in a lower, lower percentage in lower enrollment. What is that going to do to our bus?
So, remember, we started this year not necessarily knowing what the COVID protocols were going to be.
Which I get, yep.
So, I expect going into school year twenty-two, twenty-three, our numbers will be pretty consistent, but we have, we run a very efficient bus fleet here in Pembroke, so we, when, where we can, we do combine bus routes to get students on. So, there was a time when we had twenty-eight buses, we're not a twenty-six buses.
Two, two buses, if I think in my math right, two buses that, we reduce by two buses, we could basically add a teaching position within, within range.
Right, so to, to reduce by two buses, you need a hundred and forty-two kids in the same neighborhood to not want.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking where our numbers are versus our budget, because if we figure this out in September, that we're going to have a bus savings, you, you can't make some educational changes that would like to.
Right, I'm not anticipating a bus savings. Right now, our buses are pretty tight on timelines, so as I get further into this, you'll see kind of how the buses run in our district. So, just looking at our transportation costs over the past five years, the top line is our regular ed transportation. I do also want to draw some attention to our special ed transportation, because that is a number that we talk about when we're talking about cost fluctuations year over year. So, you'll see kind of where we've been in the past five years, from one point six million all the way up to this year's regular transportation of one point eight million. So, that includes all of our regular ed buses, our late buses that we run Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday at the middle school and high school, as well as our buses to Silver Lake. We do have one bus that goes to South Shore Boat Tech, and we also cost share a bus for our students that go to Norfolk Aggie. Sped transportation, again, obviously, the dips are in similar places because we did encourage families to drive their students to school over the course of last year. The dip in nineteen twenties, because you'll remember after March, walked the day out of my mind, twelve thirteen, we didn't run any more buses. So, there was some savings as we got to the latter part of that fiscal year, and you'll remember that we used those savings to really set us up into a good positioning for the following fiscal year. You guys ask me all the time how much you take in for bus passes, so I thought it'd be helpful for you to see it. So, we generally take in about a hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, in school year twenty twenty-one, that is so low, because again, our ridership was down as well as the fact that we issued refunds from the previous year. So, having stopped school in the middle of March, we did issue families a refund. There were a number of families that chose to turn that refund into a donation to our transportation department, and then in addition, the bus pass for last year was less expensive because we had the hybrid schedule. So, students were only riding the bus two days, then four days, then five days, so it fluctuated over the year. This year, we've taken in a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and depending upon what the fee discussion is next week, we'll see whether we're, we'll be forecasting an increase in that number. So, as Mike was alluding to when I was setting up the slides, our current contract with First Student is a three-year contract with two one-year options. June thirtieth is the end of that three-year contract. We do start our first year of the options, which is the time that we start to look at going out to bid. I will be honest with you, First Student is the only transportation provider that has bid in Pembroke for as long as I've been here, and before that, there is a lot in Pembroke, so it is, it is convenient for them to bid on our bus contract. We have gone out for full bids the last few times and gotten no other vendors interested in the transportation. So, to talk a little bit about what entailed in the bus contract, we specify the age of the buses, the mileage of the buses, whether it's a seventy-one or an eighty-four passenger bus, the training that we're looking for for the drivers, we require that all of our buses are equipped with cameras, all of those pieces are part of the bid when we go out to bid. We have been fortunate with our contractual increases over the past couple of years with First Student have been three point two five percent. Obviously, we don't have the rate for FY twenty-three yet, it should be out probably by the end It should be out probably by the end of April. But we have, I budgeted accordingly to kind of the past trends. The piece that is the wild card, not just for buses, but for all transportation right now is fuel. So all of our contracts for transportation have a fuel clause in them. It is based off a twelve-month average of the CPI, so of the Consumer Price Index. So there isn't been a huge increase over the past couple of months because it's averaged out over twelve months. But we will probably see an increase in that fuel surcharge as we go into the next fiscal year. As I said before, we have twenty-six buses, twenty-four do regular day transportation. We have two vocational buses, that's a Silver Lake bus and a South Shore Boat Tech bus. I have been talking with Tom Hickey at South Shore Boat Tech around the number of students that we have going to that school has decreased over the past few years. We haven't had as many students as admitted, so we have some flexibility on that bus. So we're talking about us selling some seats to South Shore Boat Tech on a route that it would make sense for us to pick up on the way there. So to kind of get back some of those costs. And again, there's actually two buses that go to Norfolk Aggie. If you've seen them, I think it picks up at CBS at four AM and comes back around seven PM. But it does service four or five towns on the South Shore, so we share the cost of that bus.
So can we trade some of those seats for enrollment slots at South Shore Boat Tech?
No, 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 he's not interested in that.
Is he talking about taking more of our students that apply because?
No, so if you follow, I don't even know how much of a life any of you have, but if you follow the MSBA project, so South Shore Boat Tech has been invited into the feasibility study phase, which means they won't make any changes to their, their admission policy for us right now. And chapter seventy-four admissions have changed now that all students in the member districts must be considered for admission before you can go outside. So before, let's say the admission score is ninety, any student that got a ninety or greater was eligible for admission. And now you have to take all of the member towns before you can go outside, so.
Just to remind everybody, for us to become a member town, it's a big capital buy-in.
Right, so nine years ago, they were asking for five-hundred thousand dollars. At that time, we didn't have enough kids going there for it to make sense. That is no longer what the ask is now. Because they're in the pipeline for a new building, they're looking for each of the member towns to pass a debt exclusion override for the building. So we are not in that pipeline right now.
Is there flexibility on the size of the bus?
So the small shooting goes seventy-one. Prior to two thousand and eighteen, we didn't even have a bu, or twenty-seventeen, we didn't have a bus going to South Shore Boat Tech. We did it with van transportation because we had so few kids. Right now, I think there's thirteen kids on that bus. So depending on what they're looking at for, you know, picking up, us picking up at Hanson or whatnot, would determine whether or not we run the bus or not. If it's not cost benefit for us, then we'd go back to the van transportation.
I think, you know, we've asked several times, asked a long, a lot of times, for the legislature to consider vocational education the same way they look at regional transportation, which regional transportation is re, has a reimbursement rate. Silver Lake is, is one. They get money from the Commonwealth for transportation. Well, our position has been consistently that a vocational education student is part of a region. We should be able to get some reimbursement. You look at it, we're going to spend this year a hundred and forty thousand dollars to transport. You know, and it's the right thing to do, right? That's, it's a great opportunity for those students. So it's not debating whether, you know, we should spend it. It's the question of can we spend it and get some money back because we're doing what the Commonwealth is asking us to do that we could use for other programs, so.
Right. We've actually asked the question two ways, the way you just described it. And then we also asked if we could charge those families the same fee that we charge for our own secondary families for a bus pass, and it was a no on both accounts. So I did include the, include that vocational transportation number in the Senator Moran's budget requests for us. Again, we haven't heard anything back from them yet, but. In the past, we've gotten a lot of questions on how the buses run and what a tiered bus is. So the most efficient way to run a bus is to run as many tiers as possible. So there's been a lot of conversation in the past on why one elementary school, why all three elementary schools don't start at the same time? How can it possibly cost that much for that to happen? So here's a breakout of our buses. We need twenty-four buses to do the middle school, high school run. Of those twenty-four buses, nine of them then turn around and pick up students for Habamok and twelve of them pick up students for Bryant Phil. Then of those twenty-one buses, fifteen of them go out a third time to pick up for North. So you can see at the bottom there, the difference in cost associated with running two tiers of a bus or three tiers of a bus. This conversation came up a lot when we talk about elementary bus passes. And so it is almost cost neutral to have elementary students ride for free in the sense that the cost associated with running buses is two-tiered because many fewer families take elementary transportation when it's for cost, as we can show from the years prior to the elimination of the elementary bus, bus fee. It makes the most sense for us to run as many three-tiered buses as possible. And that's the work that happens over the summer, both with Laura Jacobs in our transportation office and First Student to map up, map out the routes because we do want to use the buses as efficiently and effectively as possible. I will say the South Shore Boat Tech bus is the only single-tier bus we run because of the time of that school day. So if any of you are familiar with South Shore Boat Tech, they are like a eight-twenty-five or eight-forty start. So we can't use it for the secondary run and then we can't use it for the elementary run. It's just a one, one and done for us, so. That is the makeup of the buses. The other conversation that we had was around what was in the transportation revolving account. So just right now, presently, there's three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars in transportation revolving. That is, will land right around two-sixty. We have a couple of salaries that come out of there. That is low for us in what we carry over year from year. We are allowed to carry three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over per the fifty-one E revolving account. So, you know, that nets out the purchase of the two buses that we did buy in December. That will be delivered in July, super timely. So there is money there because as we get into next week and the following week and the week after that, we'll start talking about balancing and what we pull from transportation revolving as an offset to the budget as well. That is transportation. Does anyone have questions about transportation?
No, but I think you officially told me how to spell buses.
I don't know, I think two S's today. I felt like two S's. But I feel like it can be one S.
I've always questioned that one.
It could be either one. I try to be consistent. The utilities one of left out. That's interesting, isn't it, how it works?
Yeah, the mini-buses. I don't use them very much.
I don't even know which ones.
Because you're still in a specialized. Right.
Yeah.
But you can't fit a bigger team on, though.
Yeah, but you could do golf.
Yeah. Yeah, there was like fourteen to eighteen seats or something like that.
Hi. So utilities. So I am going to give you a little bit of information about heat and electrical. Those are the two utilities I selected. Our water bills are very similar year over year. I'm excited to let you know that we have entered into a new agreement to lower our phone costs by almost three thousand dollars a month. So we'll begin to see those savings going into the next fiscal year. So that is great because we are going to need them for heat and electricity. So I don't really know how much you all know about utilities and how it works, but it's really difficult to compare annually, heat, for example. So heat is dependent, is dependent on degree days, the number of thermes you use. It's not apples to apples year over year. So the, the goal here is, is to kind of show you where we've been in the past, where we are right now, and talk a little bit about what we've traditionally budgeted for utilities and whether or not that's going to end up being sufficient over the course of the next two to three years. So last year, you'll remember that part of our Covid protocols required keeping the windows open in classrooms. So our heating costs, as you can see in those winter months, are quite significant. There is no longer that protocol in place here in Pembroke, and you see that our heating costs continue to be high. That is because there is a change in the cost per therm, similar to what you see at home. So the increase from last year is the fact that we used significantly more thermes than we have ever used before because we had the windows open. Now it is because of the cost of them. So looking at kind of what we've spent in the past and what we're on, on par to spend this year, we generally spend, you know, two, two-fifty on heat. Last year, again, with what we had in place was a little over three-hundred thousand. We budgeted three-thirty-five for this year, not knowing what the protocols were going to be for Covid. So far, we've spent two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. We are going to be cutting it really close when it comes to balancing that line for heating of buildings. So just looking at last year's bills from March to June, it was about a hundred thousand dollars. That's going to put it right at where, what we have budgeted. My expectation is it's probably going to go slightly over that just based off of the cost associated with home heating energy at this point. So I have budgeted accordingly for FY twenty-three, but I do think if we continue to see this trend, we're going to have to start to think differently about, you know, our budget priorities. Heating of the buildings has never been a level-one priority that we've needed to talk about. But we may get to the point where we need to start to talk about what some of the state guidelines are around minimum temperatures in classrooms, which is, is not where we've been, right? So our set points are set to a comfortable level. We start running our heat hours, two hours before students or staff enter the building. Again, these are practices we may have to start to look at if funding the utilities line in future years becomes an issue.
What's the numbering for next year? What to do, or would you have an increase in the percentage?
So I think there's a four percent increase in there for next year. But again, we did start this fall with some of the chilly days with windows open prior to some of our changes in our Covid protocols. So there's some of that in there a little.
Okay, that goes to about, three-thirty-five goes to three-fifty, roughly?
Yeah, I think I have three-fifty-five in there.
We can't, we can't use any extra funds or anything like that for the service stuff?
For utilities, no. Because it's considered routine building maintenance.
Yeah.
Electricity, I sent you guys some of the most amazing spreadsheets ever.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
I just wanted you to have a glimpse of what it is like to try to manage the solar farm here in Pembroke. So you'll remember, I think it was twenty-eighteenth, that the town approached us with this amazing opportunity for the solar farm and how all of our electricity would be free. And that is true. So the electricity, the solar farm on the landfill does generate enough electricity to power all of the town buildings, but the fees are still associated with the delivery of that electricity as well as the third party that harnesses the electricity from the solar field and then turns it into actual kilowatt-hours. So you see here just how fun it is to manage the solar energy credits that we get on our bills. So you'll see in July of twenty-one, we got, our utility bills were negative twenty-four thousand dollars because there were credits left from the previous fiscal year that weren't applied. Then you'll see as we go over the course of the year, there were a couple of months where we didn't get any credits, but then I met up for them in the following month. So it's, it's really hard to track. But I do want you to see that uptick there where we are now. So again, similar to home heating, electricity is at your home and in public sector, becoming a little bit outrageous. So we are on the uptick for electricity for the month, for the fiscal year. On the next slide, you'll see before the solar farm was installed, we used to budget around five-hundred thousand dollars for electricity. We had guaranteed savings that first year, I think of one-oh-five, or one-eighty-five, and then one-oh-five. It went down a little bit each year, but you can see that huge increase from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. So again, part of our Covid protocols entailed keeping the HVAC units and the Univents in all five buildings, running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and purging the system quite frequently. So our electrical costs in FY twenty-one were over five-hundred thousand dollars. We did anticipate it going down this year, though we did still budget a high amount, not necessarily knowing what the fall was going to look like for us. Remember, we did put this budget together in the heat of the pandemic in, in April of last year. So we do have four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars budgeted, but like heat, we are on track to overspend that line. So we've already spent three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. Our electrical costs are higher in the months of April, May, and June than they are in other months just based off of the AC units that run at the high school. We have window air conditioners in some of our schools as part of student plans. You know, there's fans, there's all of that. So we are on par to go over that number slightly, would be my guess. Obviously, we have some flexibility in other lines based off of some of the additional cares reimbursements we were able to garner this fiscal year. So I would anticipate coming back to you with a request to transfer into both of those utility lines as we start to close out.
So I missed it, or maybe I didn't hear it yet. Eighteen was when the solar farm went in?
Yes, so nineteen was the first year of savings.
Nineteen was the first year of savings, so we saved about a hundred thousand.
We saved, one-oh-five was the guaranteed savings. I think we saved a little bit more than that.
Okay. And then we're ticking back to over where we were prior to that now?
Because of the, the cost per kilowatt-hour.
Based on usage?
Not, yeah, so the solar farm itself still generates enough energy to power, to fully power all of our buildings and the buildings at the town. It's just the, the cost associated with it.
The credits aren't keeping up with our use?
No, so in the next tab, you can see what the credits are, again.
So will the credits always stay consistent and then our use is based on, our cost will go up based on our?
The credits are based off the number of kilowatt-hours produced by the solar farm, which is more than you use in the building, so they sell them back to the grid. There's some kind of weird formula for that. You can see from the last slide what our credits were per month. There is no rhyme or reason to them. I do understand that it has to do with overcast days and weather, but there is definitely some discrepancies between like, let's say in April of twenty-one, the solar credits were three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, but our bill, our portion of the bill from the third-party entity was eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-five. So there's times where the bill from the third-party entity doesn't match the month or the timeline of the utility.
It's your pleasure.
We, we knew this was going to be a problem the first year when we budgeted. That first year, I didn't even think we budgeted the one-oh-five. I think we only budgeted like sixty or seventy on the credit because it, it goes all over the place. Because we even had history at that point. And the numbers that you're seeing here, the variations from month to month, that's what we saw that, that first time.
Are we able, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was going to say.
It would be a full-time job to manage the, this utility line. Like when I open the bill, and those of you that are signing warrants, when you see the electric bills, it's like, there's no rhyme or reason to how the credits are applied. Like sometimes the high school gets no credit, but the hatch building gets thirty thousand dollars worth of credit. There's, there's just no rhyme or reason to it.
Are we able to negotiate any set price per kilowatt-hour? I know in the private sector, especially when they were really first coming out with these, because we had, we had like a fifteen-year lock on our kilowatt, or twenty-year lock on the price per kilowatt-hour. So can the town negotiate any of that or can we negotiate something like that? Given it's kind of, they got our business?
Right, we have no control over the electrical or the heat. We're part of a power options contract with the town, so it's a full collaboration with the town. I think Nick Sicello came to talk to you guys when we first talked about the solar farm. Because at that time, we had our own, we had separate bills. There was conversation of us turning the bills over to the town, and then there was concern on how we got the savings, right? Did that go back and forth about it? My understanding is that the energy committee that entered into the agreement, so it's really mostly the select board, none of the original members of that committee still exist. So there's some confusion on what the credits are supposed to be, what the schedule is that they're following. So, you know, I've met with Bill a couple of times about this, and he is in conversation with, our third-party biller is Onyx, is the name of the company. So he's working with them to get an outline, I think it's a Schedule III, that outlines what you should be getting month by month. Because you should be able to kind of check and see your national grid bill should tie to the kilowatt-hours that they're billing you for. And that's not happening right now.
But we did buy gas futures at one point.
That was the Ella Peterson thing. That was like ten years ago.
It's really hard to know if there's actually really a savings here because you're paying the third party, you know?
It's hard, right? So the third party does, if it's based off kilowatt-hours, we split the bill with the town and the DPW barn because they're all part of the solar farm. Obviously, there is additional solar panels going in at the edge of the Habamok Arena there. I don't know anything about what those are, whether that's town or private, I have no idea. But, so electricity is something that we're watching. Again, we have, as part of our school project eight years ago, we looked at relamping all of our buildings. We did all of the occupancy centers. So there's not a lot of cost-saving pieces we could do in order to drive down that electrical charge right now. So we do need to continue to kind of keep an eye on that in particular. If it continues to go up, again, we're going to need to start thinking differently about how we budget for utilities.
Yeah, we talked about this recently. There was nothing else on there that had a payback period within our time horizon. I think we were using a five-year time horizon.
I think you guys even bumped it up to seven.
We tried to for, for bigger items, not, not for, some of them had a ten-year time horizon on a five-dollar item. So we immediately blew those away. Anything that went, we went longer than five, had to be a big ticket item.
Right, and the only one we went with was the fiber.
And with the, the potential new air conditioning roof units, which are going to run more efficiently?
Yeah, they are, Susie.
Any, I, I, is there any, you know, I mean, we just put two new heaters in at our house. So I, I, you know, I think from what happens in my house and I extrapolate it into your house. But with these new units, either they're, we're looking now for rebates. So that is, is that a potential one-time hit for savings? And also with the, you know, the budget that we're putting together, you know, or is there any way you can determine what savings, if any, those units could produce based on what we're dealing with, with petroleum products and everything else right now?
So the rebates are part of the bid when the vendors submit them. So the rebates are part of the bid when the vendors submit them, so they'll outline, that's how they drive down their bottom line for the units. So keep in mind, we're placing seven out of 26 units on top of the high school, so even though seven will be running more efficiently, 19 will be running one year more or less efficiently. And it takes a little bit of time, right? There's a finesse to kind of building operation and building management when it comes to set points and temperature controls. I do anticipate some savings from them, but not, not with enough confidence to say what that would be right now.
To be able to budget off of it, gotcha. Okay.
The joy of utilities.
Anything else? So we are not meeting next week, but we're meeting the following. Oh no, we are meeting next week.
We are meeting next week, right?
We're meeting every week except for vacation.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I didn't realize it was already almost able. Okay, so, nothing else then? So with that, taking motion to go into executive session pursuant to Chapter 38, Section 2183, to conduct a review and potential approval of release of executive session minutes and to discuss a personnel matter as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. We will have additional business to be conducted afterwards.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by David, second by Susie. Sue?
Yes.
Sue? Susie?
Yes.
You got a note by now?
Yes.
A yes, so thanks everybody for watching, and we're just gonna approve the minutes after we finish. All right, okay, so we're back in regular session at 9:01. Single agenda item to cover. So is there a motion to approve the executive minutes, approve and release the executive minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion by David, second by?
Seconded by.
By Susie?
Seconded by.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?